Part of the bet wasn't that I'm an Army guy, is it?
I like the hair, though. I didn't know that was part of the bet.
It wasn't. I was just getting into character. Oh, next year, does that mean if Gators win next year, you have to go your hair long?
I don't know that I can do that in that short period of time. I would like to welcome you to the reorganization meeting of the School Board and Financing Corporation meeting for this, the 28th day of November 2017. If anyone would like to speak during the hearing of citizens, please fill out a card in the back of the chambers and hand it to your board assistant, Kathy Tompkins. I will call you to speak at the appropriate time. You will have three minutes to speak. Nominations are now in order for the office of Chair of the Sarasota County School Board for 2017-2018.
I nominate Bridget Ziegler for Chair.
I second it.
Okay, because it's an election, seconds are not necessary. We have a nomination for Bridget Ziegler. Are there any other nominations for Chair? Hearing none, I declare the nominations closed. All those in favor of Bridget Ziegler serving as Chair for the 2017-2018 school year signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Jane Goodwin, aye. Caroline Zucker, aye.
I think you should note that they're hereby...
The ayes have it, five-nothing. I hereby declare Bridget Ziegler the 2017-2018 Chair of the Sarasota County School Board. I will now accept nominations are in order for the office of Vice Chair of the Sarasota County School Board for the 2017-18 school year.
I nominate Jane Goodwin as Vice Chair.
We have a nomination for Jane Goodwin. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, I declare the nominations closed. All those in favor of Jane Goodwin serving as Vice Chair for the 2017-2018 school year signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Caroline Zucker, aye. Jane Goodwin, aye.
All those opposed? And it passes, five-nothing. I hereby declare Jane Goodwin the 2017-2018 Vice Chair of the Sarasota County School Board. Are there any cards for hearing of citizens? Are those for the regular meeting?
Those are for the board.
Okay.
Do comments from the board?
Any comments from the board?
I'd like to take this opportunity to congratulate Bridget and welcome her as Chair, and for Jane Goodwin for Vice Chair. We've got an exciting year ahead of us with the referendum, and I know that as a team we'll all go forward and working together. I think I'm looking forward to next year.
I'm thankful that Bridget is Chair, and I think she's going to do a wonderful job. She did a wonderful job paneling the meeting this morning in May, and I'm also thankful that she's going to be able to rely upon Jane and her experience with the referendum. So I think that the combination of Bridget and Jane as Chair and Vice Chair is the right combination at the right time of the school district.
Well, thank you for the nomination and the honor of voting me as Chair. I think I'm very pleased with the movement that we've done as a group collectively, and I think that, as we've discussed a number of times, we agree and focus on so many areas that we need to keep our focus in that lane and move this school district forward and focus on showing all the wonderful things that exist in Sarasota County. So I'm honored to serve as your Chair, and I appreciate the support.
So before I pass the gavel, I just want to, for the record, recognize that Eric Robinson, Bridget Ziegler, and Shirley Brown are in attendance here at the dais, and that Jane Goodwin and Caroline Zucker are calling in telephonically. That's just for the record, and at this time, I would like to pass the gavel to our new Chair, Bridget Ziegler.
Thank you very much. Moving on to item seven, the approval of the 2018 regular school board meetings. The first day of the month is at 6:30 PM. The third Tuesday of the month is at 3:00 PM. July 17th and December 11th meetings will be held at 3:00 PM. The dates are January 9th and 23rd, February 6th and 20th, March 6th and 20th, April 3rd and 17th, May 1st and 15th, June 5th and 19th, July 17th, August 7th and 21st, September 4th and 18th, October 2nd and 16th, November 6th and 20th, and December 11th. May I have a motion on item seven?
So moved.
I second.
I have a motion and a second on item seven. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed?
Jane Goodwin, aye. Caroline Zucker, aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous vote for item seven, approval of the 2018 regular school board meetings. I move to, excuse me, number eight is suspension of the reorganizational meeting and convening of the annual meeting of the Financing Corporation for the School Board of Sarasota County, Florida. May I have a motion?
I move that we suspend the reorg meeting and convene the annual meeting of the Financing Corporation.
I second.
I have a motion and a second on item eighteen. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Jane Goodwin, aye. Caroline Zucker, aye.
I have unanimous approval of item eight. Moving on to item nine, election of officers.
I move that Bridget Ziegler be elected to Chair of the Financing Corporation of the Sarasota County School Board.
Second, Jane Goodwin.
We don't have to make Jane the Vice Chair, or is that another vote?
No.
Okay.
It's just a Chair and Secretary.
I think you...
And then I make a motion that Todd, can I amend the motion to make Todd Bowden the Secretary?
Oh, we do them all together? Okay. All right.
Do you accept the amendment? Is there any opposition to the amendment of the motion?
No. Hearing none? May I have a voice vote on the amended motion?
Aye.
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 Jane Goodwin, aye. Aye.
And the motion passes nine-zero.
Nine-zero.
Nine-zero. Excuse me, five-zero. Moving to item number 10, adjournment of the annual Financing Corporation meeting to reconvene the organizational meeting. May I have a motion?
I move that we adjourn the annual Financing Corporation meeting.
I second.
I have a motion and a second. Do all those in favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Jane Goodwin, aye.
The Chair votes aye, and the item passes unanimously.
Now we're back to the reorg, which you have to adjourn.
And now we're back to the reorganizational meeting, and the item is adjourned.
Whoa. We just spent 30 minutes together.
Welcome. I'd like to take this opportunity to welcome you to the school board meeting this Tuesday, November 28, 2017. If you wish to speak during the hearing of citizens, please pick up a card in the back of the chambers, print your name and top it clearly, and return it to the card, excuse me, return the card to our board assistant, Kathy Tompkins. At the appropriate time, I will call you up to speak. If you are here for the public comments on the grade six through 12 science textbook adoption materials, those comments will be held at the end of the meeting today. That's, again, specific to the science textbook adoption process. If you'll now stand for the flag salute under the, I don't have the, under the direction of the Northport, Northport High. Don't have the names. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for And apologize, that was the Northport JRTC. Thank you very much for that. And just give us one minute. I'd like to, that's okay, I'd like to introduce our student representative, Lila Ismail from Northport High. How are you today?
I'm good. How are you guys?
Well, thank you for joining us. I know you're from Northport High. Would you like to tell us a little bit about yourself?
Well, I'm the student body president at Northport High School. I'm also in National Honor Society, Link Crew, the ACE program. I'm really involved with my community. I want to go to Florida State University and study criminology.
It's a long, long day.
Go Knowles.
Well, I appreciate, I appreciate you coming today and for taking place and also talking about the Knowles, which has been a brutal time for my fellow board member, Mr. Robinson. So, thank you again.
No, thank you for having me.
Moving to item number four, superintendent's report. Dr. Bowden?
Due to the length of the agenda and the additional comment section, I'm going to forego the superintendent's report this evening.
Very good. Thank you very much. Then we'll move over to hearing of citizens. As said before, each speaker will have three minutes to speak. When the timer flash is yellow, one minute remains, and you will need to begin to summarize. You must stop speaking when the buzzer rings. Please note that respect for divergent viewpoints and civility will be shown at every board meeting. Whether you agree or disagree with the speaker, you should listen politely and respectfully without making any sounds of approval or disapproval, including clapping. The first, excuse me, I think it's not in order. As I said earlier on, I believe most of the cards are on the textbook adoption. However, I don't know if we wanted to wait specifically to item number 51, or if we want to have your comments heard now at the front of the meeting, since I'm not sure if it's specific to the science book or if it's another, just general adoption. Okay, so Julie Brady?
Is it all right if I go first?
Oh, of course. Forgive me. Steve Vernon? They're not in order.
Good afternoon. Can you hear me all right?
Yes, sir.
All right. Good afternoon. My name is Steve Vernon, and I represent the Florida Citizens Alliance. It's a statewide education organization. We're here to assist Sarasota citizens in alerting you to the fact that we have a serious problem in Florida overall, but in particular Sarasota County. Inasmuch as we have flawed textbooks, they are dramatically flawed in a lot of different ways, and we're not here to make a comment on the science textbook process. We're here to just make an overall comment on the fact that the individuals following me will demonstrate how flawed these textbooks are, and the fact that we have to be very cognizant over the fact that our children are being indoctrinated, and they're being indoctrinated by these textbooks that show total bias, that are filled with half-truths, that out-and-out errors, historical errors, and we need to put a stop to that. And we need textbooks that are not biased, that strictly go by the facts, and that demonstrate that there should be a very important emphasis on factual information and not political correctness and not misinterpretation of historical facts. So I just want to tell you that the indoctrination of our children, as you well know, our children are here, are legacy, and we really need to do right by them. So we are going to demonstrate the fact that we have a real serious problem here with these textbooks, and they'll go into details, but I just want to tell you that from the Florida Citizens Alliance standpoint, we are helping all 67 school boards in the state, Sarasota being one of them, and I sure hope that you're open to hearing what the citizens have to say about these materials and textbooks. And I want to thank you for this opportunity.
It's perfectly timed. Next up is Julie Brady.
Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, we can.
I have actually brought the textbook to show you. It's very heavy. It's called Modern World History: Patterns of Interaction, the Florida edition. This was an improvement over the previous one that was called World History, and it didn't have information about Florida. That book was 2005. This one is 2013. But I'm going to be concentrating on a chapter that is most egregiously biased. It is Chapter Four, pages 300 to 303. It contrasts socialism and capitalism, and it never mentions the many negative aspects and results of socialism. There is a comparison chart on page 303 that contrasts capitalism and socialism, and most of the adjectives describing socialism are quite positive. It takes a description of capitalism, and, for instance, progress results when individuals follow their own self-interests. That's what it says about capitalism. It repeats that, and it says that that only works when the community of producers cooperate for the good of all. Other aspects of capitalism are described and then negatively countered. Socialists believe that capitalist employers take advantage of workers. The community or state must act to protect workers. It goes on and on along that vein. It talks about unequal distribution of wealth, and it says a better system is to distribute goods according to each person's need. What it fails to do is mention the many examples of countries that have tried capitalism and failed. I'm sorry, I meant socialism. Thank you. It doesn't mention the more negative aspects of socialism. For instance, socialism strangles economic growth by penalizing success and rewarding failure. Socialism stifles free speech, because anybody that is against it is silenced, usually by violence. It leads to an increasingly tyrannical government.
Thank you.
It sounds like my time's up, but I think you get the picture.
Thank you, Ms. Brady.
Thank you.
Next is Esther Rushell. I don't know, I know I butchered that. Also, if you can make your comments to the board and not the audience, please.
When we had a chance to review the book World History: Patterns of Interaction in 2010, with a copyright date of 2010, it had about 35 pages glorifying Muhammad and Islam and five pages for Christianity and Judaism. The new book with the same name, called The Florida Edition, does not have all those pages on religions. However, it still refers to jihad as it did in the earlier edition, as well as stating Islam accepts all religions, including Christianity and Judaism. Questions for students give a positive role of Muslims. Jihad is used to mean striving, referring to an inner struggle against unbelievers. Instead, we know what it means by killing unbelievers. Righteous women were obedient in early days. Women could participate in public life and gain education. However, over time, Muslim women were forced to live isolated lives and expected to be veiled, and in truth Sharia law controls the private as well as the public life of the women. Women did not make a smooth transition to imposed wearing of the hijab, but thousands of women protested in the streets at that time to the announcement that the headwear would be mandatory. In the Muslim faith, a Muslim man can marry a child as young as one-year-old, consummating the marriage by age nine. And the goal of radical Islamists is to impose Sharia law on the world. These truths are not revealed in the book. Instead, a very favorable view is used. We have seen on TV the atrocities of what the Muslim extremists have done to Christians and to people of their own faith. When I checked the book further for the American history, there was very little there, and George Washington was hardly mentioned. We were told... We were told that was because it was being taught in the earlier grades. Carol Holland picked up those books, and while the middle school book was okay, the high school book took the liberty of rewriting our American history. She will give a report on that book. World history is used throughout the country with various names of world history, and many parents in many countries, counties, have protested it. Florida Citizens Alliance, who spoke earlier, is an organization dedicated to examining school textbooks which can document examples of distortion in our books, but can also recommend better books used for students. Rather than completely removing this book, it is suggested that teachers be giving an addendum added so they can eliminate the untruthful section of the book until we can find a better book to replace it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Esther. Pronounce your last name for me. Esther, pronounce your last name for me.
Rockwell.
Okay, I knew it, but thank you.
Thank you very much. I have distributed to the board members a part on the Constitution. I am a constitutional instructor, and I found this very disarming or just very harmful to what is listed in our Constitution. First of all, it says it is a living Constitution, which is a misnomer. It is not a living Constitution. Anything that lives dies eventually. What I've done is I've copied from the book, and you have copies of it, what they have done in this textbook with the Constitution. And what they have done is instead of indicating that there are amendments to the Constitution, they simply have drawn a line through anything that is in fact an amendment to the Constitution without ever mentioning it. And specifically, I have given you on page 90 of quote-unquote "the living Constitution" what it says, the former method of electing the president, and they have lined through the entire paragraph. And at no time do they tell why this is actually the 12th amendment to the Constitution and why it has, and why it was amended. They do that all throughout the Constitution. They simply rule through as if this no longer exists. I have also given everyone a copy of the Constitution. So if you look at Article Two and you look at Section Three, I believe, it will talk about the Constitution and about, you will notice at the end of that paragraph, there will be an asterisk, which is true in every single Constitution that is made. There is an asterisk that will tell you that that part of the Constitution or those lines in the Constitution are now part of an amendment process. And nowhere does the book mention that. Then they list the amendments at the end of the Constitution after lining through much of the Constitution as if it no longer exists. The Constitution has 4,543 words, and the Constitution, in their 4,543 words, is listed always as the Constitution of the United States of America. The amendments then are amended, and that's in Article Five, which tells how something is amended. And so as a constitutional instructor, when I opened this book and saw what was on the Constitution, I was very, very upset. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Carol.
And this is the book.
Next up is Alicia Vernon.
Y'all have been so gracious. Dr. Bowden was a real joy and very, very helpful, and y'all have just been wonderful to listen to us and hear our gripes here. The Florida Citizens Alliance is the group that Steve and I belong to, and we're very proud to be a part of it. We are the ones who are very instrumental in the 899, eight, 988, what is it?
989.
989. And what prompted it is a bunch of citizens got together years ago and started going through the textbooks in just a couple of the counties, and they documented 11 pages of pornography, reconstruction of history, advanced religious indoctrination, political indoctrination, along with the Common Core math was really English arts. And 11 pages just in two counties of just line items, oh, in this particular item in this book. So that's what prompted us to say that, well, maybe the Department of Education really isn't doing a very good job of quality control. All of these are against the laws of Florida. They violate our own laws, and yet they let them get into our textbooks. So we've concluded that probably more eyes out there would be beneficial to help in the quality control of our textbooks. So we really appreciate you engaging us, and we hope to engage even more as more and more textbooks are now being approved. We're going to try to implement that legislation and help out with the quality control that the Department of Education just, oh, let's be illegal here. I mean, I thought that was a little wrong. So thank you. You guys are the best, and you'll be hearing more and more, hopefully.
Thank you very much, Alicia.
Thank you for allowing us to speak. I, everything that I was going to say has been said. I just want to tell you, I come from a socialist country. It does not work. And portions of this book is what was the downfall of South Africa. And I ask you to please consider doing away with passages in this book because it's not good for our children, it's not good for our country. Like I said, everything that's been said, I don't have to repeat it. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Cynthia. That concludes Hearing of Citizens. However, we normally leave board comments till the end, but I know that since all of the topics were discussed on this, I was wondering if, Dr. Bowden, you wanted to address some of the policies that we have already put out for advertisement to adopt or implement, HB 989, which became 7069? And also, I know Dr. Roca and I have spoken about some elements to, just in general, on how we're working to, one, implement HB 989, but also the transparency component and where to access that. So, Dr. Bowden?
Yes, as a matter of fact, as they made reference to, we had an opportunity to speak prior to the meeting. They have received a copy of Policy 4.30 as approved for advertisement at our November 7th Board meeting. That item will come back before you on December 12th to be adopted as policy, which would then trigger some actions on behalf of staff. It makes reference to some forms and some different things that would be the implementation of that policy. You also, this evening, have a special hearing related to science textbooks, which is a direct change in the way that we adopt textbooks, in which we do the hearing upfront and receive input from the community. And so as you'll see, our policies related to textbooks are evolving as state law has and to remain in compliance.
Very good, thank you. I also wanted to, in conversation with Dr. Roca, because of the changes, and there's a lot of things that I think our district is doing to go above and beyond just with the bare minimum of the legislation requested, is perhaps we could do a short memo to release out to the public of some of the, you know, high-level changes. But, because I think that they're not only just online, but being able to access these books in person also, just some of those items that I think Dr. Roca and I have talked about, but again, addressing some of the changes, how we're implementing it, to be proactive as we move forward with implementation.
Absolutely.
Any comments?
Yeah, but bottom line, I know a lot of people were involved in some textbooks in the past. Now it's going to, there's going to be an actual clearer process, it's going to be more transparent, there's going to be time for public input, and so there's going to be a lot more engagement of the citizens than maybe the way it's been done in the past. And so the level of frustration that you had in the past of not being heard, I think that we have changed the policy. So there's going to be more citizen engagement, and so hopefully that feeling of frustration that you may have, well, you know, there'll be an outlet and your voice will be heard. You know, who knows? I mean, I'm the guy to tell you, I could have voted all the time. You know, it doesn't mean, just because you get heard, doesn't mean that we end up doing what you say, because trust me, I'm living proof of it. But at least you know you get heard, so I just want to make sure everybody knows that.
Thank you. Mr. Robinson, Mrs. Brown?
And I also want to clarify, I think the voices were heard. In fact, my understanding is the new 2013 edition of that book has removed a lot of the objectionable material that was in there before. And so when the people speak, you know, they are listened to, and thank you.
Was, did one of them want to speak?
One of you, Carolina Jane, did one of you guys want to speak?
I'm here. No, that's fine.
Okay, thank you. And I just want to end on, I really appreciate your efforts and working hard, not just right now, today, and coming out and speaking and sharing your viewpoints, but also leading up to this, because we do need the support of the community to cross-reference. I think our staff does an amazing job. We also work with what's approved with the state level, but more eyes, the better. So I appreciate you guys coming out today. Thank you very much. That concludes Hearing of Citizens and the comments associated. So moving on is the, are there any additions or corrections to the agenda?
Motion for first?
Second.
I'm sorry, hold on one second. We're, Dr. Bowden, I believe there is a change?
Yes, Item 48, approval of the banking resolution, is being removed from the consent agenda, and I wish for it to be considered as new business.
Very good. Do I have a motion for the amended?
Motion for first?
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? I have four ayes and one absent for the consent agenda as amended. Moving to item number?
No, that was just the motion. Now we have to vote on the consent agenda as amended.
Well, that was a motion to amend the?
Yes.
Anybody can move something.
He pulled it.
My understanding of the motion was to vote on the amended consent.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. Sorry.
So moving on to new business.
So is 48, the first item?
Item 48 would be your first item under new business.
Thank you very much. Can I have a motion for item number 48, please?
I move the approval of the banking resolutions as presented.
I need a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second on the floor. Any comments? Mr. Robinson?
Yeah, I won't be voting in favor of this, mainly because I think that we have this resolution for the banks to tell them that, you know, we're going to pick this person as a bank so that they can go and open up banks and have a board resolution. It's customary whenever you open up a bank that you need a board resolution in order to open up the bank. It just is under this resolution. It doesn't identify what the bank is. It does create a certain criteria for the bank, but it is a rather large criteria. I don't have a problem if you guys wanted to use Wells Fargo, SunTrust, Bank of America, one of those banks. I don't think anybody would have any discussions or qualms. It's the fact that this doesn't identify any bank that you're going to do with. So for that reason, because it's not specific enough, I'll be voting against it.
I think, Mrs. Caroline, I think that it's our responsibility from the 30,000 level to give the superintendent the direction and allow him to select which bank he's going to use, which would be the best for the system at that time.
Thank you, Ms. Zucker. Any other comments? Mr. Robinson? Nope. Ms. Brown? Dr. Bowden?
Yes, the resolution that you have in front of you would be used for a variety of purposes. Each one of our individual school sites maintains an internal account, and so each time that they wish to open an account or move that account, they would need a banking resolution. So Mr. Robinson is absolutely correct when he speaks of the blanket nature of this resolution. It would be used for a variety of purposes and does have built into it a criteria, but it does not list a specific function or a specific bank, and that is by design.
And just as a follow-up question, and this is a practice we've had for years in not listing out the specific banks.
Correct. If we received a phone call from an individual school site that said they wished to move their internal account, it is still listed under the school district's federal ID number. And so we would need to provide them documentation so that they could go to the bank and open a banking account. And so this resolution would be used for that purpose. So this is an activity that is engaged in on an annual basis so that we have current resolutions.
And just as a follow-up question, is there, Mr. Hardy, any additional exposures by not listing out specific banks?
I don't believe so, as long as the criteria and the resolution are met.
I need your vote.
Okay, very good. Are there any additional comments? Ms. Zucker?
Carolina, did you want to say something?
No, I'm good.
Okay.
Thank you.
We'll do a voice vote. Can all those signify by saying aye who approved for, excuse me, item number 48?
Aye.
Aye.
Ms. Zucker? Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Any, okay. The motion passes for, excuse me, 3-1 with one F ascension.
I think Jane just got on the phone. Jane, did you?
Jane just got on the phone, yes.
Okay. So I'm sorry, can I, for clarification, since you're not in person and we need to have this on record, can you clarify who is on the phone?
Caroline Zucker.
Jane Goodwin.
Okay. Okay. So the motion passes 4 to 1. Item number 51, may I have a motion, please? Excuse me, 50.
I move the approval of the special election agreement between Sarasota County Supervisor of Elections and the School Board of Sarasota County be approved as presented.
Second.
I have a motion, a second, and I'm item number 50. Are there any comments? Hearing and seeing none. May I have, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Jane Goodwin, aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. The motion passes 5-0. Moving on to item number 51, may I have a motion, please?
51 is the public comment.
Just open it for public comment on it. Just read it.
Pardon me. So, sorry, this is the first time we've done it this way.
But just, the phone just ended. I didn't hang up.
So we're moving to item number?
I do not hang up.
Okay.
I just want to make sure that's on record.
I don't do. Sorry about the, okay, so.
Should I check on her back?
No, please, let's just keep moving. Item number 51 is public comment on grades six through 12 science textbook adoption materials.
I think at this point it would be appropriate for the chair to open the floor to public comment and see if there's anyone here who would like to comment.
Okay. Are there any cards or any members of the public who would like to speak on item number 51 on grades six through 12 science textbook adoption materials? Seeing none. The public hearing has closed. I believe that concludes the new business items for today. Are there any board member comments? We're quiet today, huh? Going easy on me?
Can I just comment on one thing?
Go ahead, Mr. Robinson.
I just want to talk about something. We talked about the workshop, that we're going to try and do a, I think this is, I'm only bringing it up a second time because I think it's of wider public interest, is that we're going to try to set up a joint meeting with the county commission to talk about some of the lessons learned at Hurricane Armor, even though staff did a wonderful job from the custodian facility staff to leadership, but I think that there's still some lessons to be learned. And so we're going to try and meet individually with the county to have a debrief, so to speak, and see what we can always do to become better. It's something that we do, we don't rest on the laws that we're in age district. We're always trying to improve student achievement, so this is another area that we are going to look to improve. So thank you, Dr. Bowden, for trying to see if you can work that out. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson. Mrs. Brown, any comments?
Nope. Fine.
Yep, just got to get on the road and get up to that conference. Yep, just got to get on the road and get up to that conference in Tampa.
She did full Brown plan. She's...
Yes, Mrs. Brown was very active today.
I did all those Brown plans this morning. I solved all of our problems.
And I do want to say, I think, again, reiterating our workshops and the productivity and the productive nature and the staff presentations have been really tremendous. I think, going back to what Mr. Robinson said, is really focusing on how to move the needle. I think that we're doing a really good job in various ways to do that, so I'm, again, very pleased with the content. So thank you for all the hard work. And moving to next monthly work session is December 12th at 8:30 till 2:00 p.m. Regular scheduled board meeting is December 12th at 2017 at 3:00 p.m. And this item is, this meeting is adjourned.
Just because you got the gavel, you don't have to use it.